The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, the invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. We had a little bit of business before having this presentation. I need a motion to accept the minutes of presentation? So... I thought we actually asked if there were any additions or questions first?
No.
Okay. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, this is the open forum. And at this time, we would like to give anybody in the audience an opportunity to ask me some questions regarding running a business, because now members cannot be aggressive. And if you have questions or comments, we ask that you let us know about that. Any papers? Okay. Now, I believe we have one agenda change? Some business. The approval of CPSA recommendations, will we add that? We have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions? Okay, motion carried. Okay, now, we'll move on to presentations. And I would like to introduce Dr. Wallace Suckey and Alan Powell. You would take the board, gentlemen?
Thank you very much. Hi, Bill Suckey, this is my colleague Alan Paul. And we're delighted to be here this evening to present the final report of the longtime seven-month study of district's facilities. I have to say that there's been a great many people that have been involved in this effort, aside from Adam and myself, some are here tonight, sitting with the board as well as in the audience. So we always start by, of course, pointing out some of the people that contributed to this effort. And as the board knows, there was an advisory committee that was appointed, and these were the members of the advisory committee. I have to say that this is probably one of the better committees we've ever worked with in terms of their willingness to commit the time to do a good job in a study of this sort. They did serve in an advisory capacity to us. We met on seven occasions throughout the past seven months. Each occasion was a two-hour meeting. In addition to that, there were optional tours prior to several of the meetings, and the majority of the committee members avail themselves of those tours of the various buildings, as well as between meetings, spending time looking at materials that we distributed and communicating with us. So I think these folks deserve the board's thanks, as well as ours, for the amount of time that they put in on this effort. And we really appreciate not only their time, but their insight into the work that we engaged in. In addition to the committee, of course, your superintendent, Michael, and his able assistant, Kimberly, we pestered them many times for information and to verify information, and they were always willing to get right back to us immediately, even today, as we sent updates to the presentation we're making in this evening. So we certainly appreciate the support they provided throughout the study process, as well as the other district administrators, the principals, of course, were on the advisory committee, but also we sought information from them, and they were very gracious of their time to give that to us. And of course, the other staff in the district, and you as a board of education. It takes a lot of courage to take a look at an issue that could be potentially as sensitive as facilities and the future of the district's facilities. So you deserve, in our estimation, a round of applause for your effort to take on this particular study. We always begin every one of the studies that we engage in with trying to identify exactly what is the information that the board of education would like in the final analysis. And we usually like to frame that interest in terms of a critical question or two. As you may recall, early on in the process, we asked the board to help us frame a critical question for this particular study, and this is what came out of that initial discussion, you may recall. And a couple key words here in this question are educationally and fiscally reconfiguring the facilities, because we look at the end result, our terms of our recommendations from those two vantage points. And this also served as a touchstone throughout the entire process, so we didn't get off on a sidetrack, and we were looking at the right information to try to answer this question. So literally, at the beginning of each one of our committee meetings, we put this up in front of the committee and said, "Remember, this is what we've been asked to do." So we wanted to stay focused on this particular question. And I think we have, you'll see when we get later on in the presentation tonight, that our conclusion is a direct answer to this particular question. The very first part of the study, or any study like this, is to try to paint a picture of the district for us, so that we feel we have a good understanding of the district relative to the critical question that has been asked. So essentially, what we try to do is we try to look at the school district's operation in a number of areas. Everything from not only future enrollments, we'll get into some of those data in a few minutes, obviously, the facilities, the academic program, the finances, the transportation. So we look at the district to try to paint a picture, so we think we have a pretty good handle on the school district before we get into talking about various options that the district, or you as a board, may want to consider in terms of possibly reconfiguring your grades and your facilities. So we take a snapshot at a point in time of the district to try to get, paint a good picture. Rather than go through the, all the detailed report, hopefully you as a board have had an opportunity to read through the report, what we're going to try to do is essentially what we did with the advisory committee in our last meetings, kind of walk through what we think are the key findings, essentially those pieces of information that bear on the question that we've been asked to respond to. And I will point out that with these key findings that I'll be using in the PowerPoint, the numbers that follow each in parentheses here, those are the pages that are referenced in the final report, so that if you do happen to have that with you, if you'd care to turn to those pages, you can see some of the actual data that we're referencing there. So let me go through the key findings somewhat quickly, and then we'll get on to our conclusions and recommendations. Finding number one. One of the first things we look at is how supportive is the community of the school district? And we try to take a look at at least one major indicator, and that is the voting pattern that has existed in the district. And when we did that here, we found that your district, your community, rather, have been very supportive of you as a board of education and of the school districts in general. For example, all the budgets in the last 10 years have passed. We know that, that's a very strong indicator, although budgets generally pass in most districts in New York State, but that's one indicator. You've had two capital projects that have passed in 2007 and 2012, again, another indicator, as well as 13 bus propositions. So all of those votes of the public should say to you as a board of education, we think we're finding that balance between what the community wants for its young people in terms of their education, and the community's ability and willingness to pay for that. So you should be applauded as a board for finding that balance on these many occasions. Finding number two. We always begin a study like this by taking a look at the enrollment history in the district, as well as trying to estimate out what's likely to happen to the enrollment in the future. And you can see what we found if you read finding number two. The last six years, of course, the district enrollment has been declining. In 2010-11, the district K through 12 had 1,164 students. Last year, it was down to 999. And as we look out into the future, out to 22-23, we're estimating that the decline will slow, but there's still going to be a little bit of decline in terms of enrollment. We're estimating about 973 kids, K-12, in 22-23. The elementary level appears to be leveling off to some degree. So again, you're not unlike most districts upstate that have been declining enrollment. However, I would tell you, with the districts that we work with anyhow, your decline hasn't been as dramatic as many upstate school districts, and doesn't appear to be likely to decline as rapidly as some other districts as well. Finding three. We tried to put the district in a larger context of the greater community, so we took a look at some of the Tompkins County statistics from the U.S. Census database, and as you can see in finding number three, the county population actually has been increasing since 2000, and is projected to remain essentially flat through 2020. In 2010, there were 101,564 residents of Tompkins County. 2020 is estimated about 101,732 residents of the county. Again, that's somewhat unusual for upstate, and I think with a lot of these demographic indicators, it's probably due to the fact that you have a younger community with the major universities in the greater area. So I can't say that for certain, but that's probably what has happened. We also took a look at the median age in the county, because the median age usually gives us some sense of what's happening to the age of individuals that might have children in school. And as you can see in finding four, the median age has been increasing. For example, in 2000, the median age in the county was 28.5 years. 2010, it was 29.6 years. 2014 was 30.0 years, so it's been going up. But I will tell you again, probably because of the universities you have in the area, that's a younger median age than many of the districts upstate. So I think you're tending to see a lot more younger people, probably due to the university effect, that are residing in the community. Finding five. We look at the age cohort of 25 to 44, because that is typically the age range in which childbirthing occurs, and therefore, it's important what's happening to that age range. So as you can see, the age range in the 25 to 44 has gone up a little bit, or excuse me, has declined, rather, but not as dramatically as others upstate. So in other words, the 25 to 44 percentage of the overall population is getting a little bit smaller, but again, not as severely as other places. We take a look at what's happening with the housing stock. And as you can see in finding six, homes being built in Tompkins Counties have declined over the span of 25 to, 2005 to 2013. As a matter of fact, from 1970 to 79, that 10-year window, there were 6,855 homes built in Tompkins County, according to the census data. And then in the eight-year period, 2005 to 2013, it was only 1,148. So the housing stock is still being added to it, but not as rapidly as it was certainly 40 years ago. Many districts upstate have large numbers of homeschooled youngsters, and as it relates to enrollment projecting, if all of a sudden there's an influx of parents that choose to homeschool, particularly in the southern tier, there's many communities have large Amish populations that choose to, have been relocated from Pennsylvania and coming up to New York State, and a number of those have their own separate schools and/or homeschools. So we take a look at what's been happening with the homeschool numbers, and quite honestly, your numbers dropped off. There was just 22 homeschooled youngsters last year, so we recommend you keep an eye on that, because previous years, there were more youngsters, as you can see, about 42 in the previous five years to that. So keep an eye on that. That may have some implications down the road, I'm not sure, we talked a little bit about that, why that might be, but there were many fewer homeschooled youngsters. We don't see the number spread across really 13 grades, K through 12, even if all the parents, because they wouldn't, decided not to homeschool, they came back to school, would have any significant impact on the enrollment. Finding eight. 33 to 43 students a year have been enrolled elsewhere, some of the schools that they go to, for example, out of your district, and these are resident students, are the new Roots Montessori School, Immaculate Conception, Waldorf School, and Notre Dame. So we keep an eye on the non-public students in particular. Occasionally, if a non-public school closes, that can have a large impact on a local school enrollment, because many of those youngsters will come back to the local public school. But given the fact that your youngsters in this, that are out of district are spread across a number of different schools, even if they were all closed, which was unlikely to happen, again, we don't believe would have a significant impact on the enrollment. Finding nine. We tried to take a look at the pre-K through 12 curriculum and program offerings, and I guess our conclusion is, for a district of your size, and you're going to hear this a number of times, that we feel that the district offers a pretty comprehensive education program for the youngsters in the community. And we'll get into some of those specifics in a minute. But given the size of your district, we're pretty impressed with the quality and comprehensiveness of the education program that's offered. Finding 10. Because this relates to some degree to the grade structure or the grade arrangement, we always take a look at how is the district organized in its grades. So we point out that the district has a pre-K through four, five through eight middle, nine through 12 high school arrangement, which by the way, is the second most common arrangement to a pre-K through six, seven, eight, excuse me, pre-K through five, six, seven, eight middle school, nine through 12 high school. So it's a very common grade pattern, and as you'll see in a few minutes, we found that there seems to be a great deal of commitment to this middle school philosophy here in the district. Elementary class sizes, we found to be very reasonable, around 20 students per class. As a matter of fact, last year, the numbers ranged from 16.7 students in an elementary class to up to 18.6 students in an elementary class. Very reasonable class sizes for elementary schools. And like most schools, you try to keep the primary grades a little smaller than the upper level grades. Finding 12. Looking at the curriculum that's offered to the elementary students, it's a pretty comprehensive program. In addition to the core academic areas, there's a number of special areas that are typically offered in elementary schools, and, but, and your school offers it as well, plus some additional opportunities. For example, there's courses for third and fourth graders that isn't mentioned here. There's a weekly book exchange at the library. There's an annual third and fourth grade musical, you probably know that, so the youngsters have a lot of opportunity to be enriched outside of the core curriculum. Finding 13. Looking at the high school, it offers a very comprehensive program, including many advanced placement courses. For example, there's a number of courses such as AP History and Government, AP Computer Science, AP Calc and Statistics, Advanced Placement Biology. So there's a very wide range of opportunities for youngsters to advance behind, beyond the regular high school core curriculum. The district also provides opportunities to the BOSs. And as you can see, there's somewheres between 23% and 29% of the juniors and seniors avail themselves of BOSs opportunities. In fact, this last year, there were 23% of the juniors and 30% of the seniors who took courses such as Animal Science, Criminal Justice, Early Childhood Education, and New Visions. So again, yet another way for youngsters to pursue their interests outside of the local high school. Finding 15. We take a look at special education, we look at not only just the numbers of youngsters that are in special education services, but where are they receiving those services? As well as when we looked at the facilities, what classrooms are being used, and how are they being used for special education services? And as you can see, the district has approximately 175 students each year that are identified and receiving special education services in the district. That's about 17% of the student body. The state recommends there probably should be about 12%, so I would say it's a little bit high, but not out of whack. There are some districts that have a much higher percent. And as you can see in finding 16, 25 to 30 students in any given year attend programs, special education programs outside of the district. 83% of the students last year were getting their programming in the school district, which is quite nice, because you want to bring all those kids home in their homeschools if you can. Through the goal-setting process, it became very clear to us that the district is committed to advancing the STEM program in the district, which is very forward-thinking in a sense that not only do you want to provide youngsters an education for today, but you want to provide an education for their future. So we noted that the district was focused on improving the STEM program district-wide. We looked at the buildings from a couple of vantage points. One is from structural soundness, and we looked at the architect's building condition survey, but we also looked at the facilities from a spatialization perspective. How are the buildings being used? Is there enough, not enough, just about the right amount, and so forth? The middle school, of course, is the oldest building in the district, while the high school is the largest, which is pretty common, with the high school being the largest building in most school districts. The middle school was built in 1927, the high school being the largest, has about 111,000 square feet in the building. Finding 19. When we analyzed the utilization of the elementary school, we found that, this is table 7.4, if you're looking at the report, on page 33, we found that in the elementary school, there really was not a lot of room at the present time. Wasn't a lot of room at the present time, so we kind of classified that as not a building where there's an opportunity really to move extra grades into, because there's available space, as we found in some other places. As far as the middle school, finding 20, there's a small amount of underutilized space, but not huge amount of space that's vacant or not being used maximally. For example, at the middle school, some of the examples, we looked at full-size classrooms, and how many of those full-size classrooms are not being used for whole sections of core subjects? And so there are a few full-size classrooms that are, in our opinion, underutilized for things such as in-school suspension, two resource rooms that could be, probably be used more economically, as well as for occupational therapy and physical therapy. But again, not a great deal of space, excess space in the middle school, a little bit. At the high school level, again, like the middle school, we found there's some underutilized space for gross analysis. Table 7.6 really summarizes this, the high school building. Like the middle school, there's a few full-size classrooms that are used for activities that are not whole sections of youngsters in social studies, English, or math, or something like that. For example, again, at the high school, like the middle school, an in-school suspension room, two special ed English rooms, a special ed math room, and so forth, that maybe could be used a little more efficiently. In addition to somewhat of a gross analysis of the space, we took a look at a period-by-period room utilization. And as you can see in finding 22, the room utilization, when we got to a period-by-period analysis, we found that it was approximately 76.4% at the high school, and about 61.8% at the middle school. You might say, gee, that seems kind of low, but in reality, if a district can schedule about as efficiently as they can, 80% is usually somewhat of a guideline, that you've scheduled the building pretty efficiently. So in both instances, certainly, the middle school, a little more efficient than the high school, but neither one is way out of whack in terms of a lot of vacant space during the day on a period-by-period basis. Finding 23. When we looked at the building condition survey that the district's architects provided for the district, we found that some, when we looked at the key space needs, and that's a key word here, we took a look at what the estimated cost for accomplishing those key space needs would be, and that's listed here for each of the three buildings. As you can see, it's a little over $11 million for the elementary, $29 million for the middle school, and $19.8 for the high school. Again, this is not the entire complete list from the building condition survey, but the key space needs. Finding 24. In many of the studies we do, districts are looking at taking an entire school offline. And when we do that, or when a district does that, we then have to take a look at what are the staffing differences when you reduce the number of facilities, and what might the impact be on transportation? Because all three of your buildings are on a central campus, number one, and because there really is not a serious, in our opinion, consideration of going down from three buildings to two buildings, there's little impact in terms of staffing or in terms of transportation, because you're on a central campus and you're going to maintain three buildings of some sort. So quite honestly, we didn't see where there would be staff savings. Usually, staff savings occurs when you can be more efficient by combining two schools together, and you can just be more efficient in terms of your staffing because of shared staff, or increasing class sizes a little bit, and so forth. So in terms of the transportation, and in terms of the staff savings becoming efficient, we just didn't see that here as part of this work. Finding 26. We take a picture also of the district's finances, and we look at several of the key indicators to try to judge what kind of financial shape the district is in. So as you can see, at the end of each year, June 30th is the end of the fiscal year for school districts, as the board knows. And so we, they have, you have to file a end-of-the-year financial report. So we took a look at the June 30th to 2016, last year's, end of the wrap-up for last year's budget year, took a look at the district's number of reserves. And reserves are money, as the board knows, that are set aside for specific purposes down the road. And districts that don't have any reserves, you have to take a look at it and say, hmm, they probably are either fiscally stressed and/or there's some fiscal management that needs to be improved in the district. That isn't your district's case. As of last June 30th, you had a number of reserves set aside. As you can see, an unemployment reserve, a reserve for retirement, which is required, a capital reserve, which is really important, and our understanding is, even though the year isn't done yet, that that may even be better at the end of this fiscal year, but importantly, the $2.9 million set aside in the capital reserve, that shows good fiscal planning, because you, school districts always have some capital work to be done. So that's an important key figure as we move along in terms of the financial analysis we'll present. And a building repair reserve. So the district, first of all, from our vantage point, as a board, having set aside these reserves, shows good fiscal planning for the future. We also take a look at the, what's known as the unassigned fund balance. And essentially, the unassigned fund balance is the money that's left over at the end of the year. In case there's an emergency, you need to have some money set aside for something that might come up that was unanticipated. So the unassigned fund balance, the state says you should have no more than 4% in your unassigned fund balance, 4% of the next year's budget. Your district, at the end of last year, hit 6%. But the district, in fairness to the board and everything, we know you've been trying to reduce that down to 12%. Quite honestly, in our, my opinion, I don't know about Al, but my opinion, 4% is ridiculously a low number, and people in the private sector would say, you know, that's crazy, you should have at least 10% in the unassigned fund balance. So the district had 1.5 million in the unassigned fund balance as, at the end of last year. Finding 28, somewhat unusual for us. All of your municipalities are on full value assessment, particularly since Covert, a couple of years ago, went to full value assessment. Now, I know that rankles some people's feathers when that happens. I certainly understand it, and I'm sure it did here, I know it did here, as a matter of fact. But it made it a little bit easier for us when we talk about the impact on the tax rate, because all of your municipalities are on full value. So whether it's assessed rate or full value rate, you know, we're really talking about the same thing. Finding 29. Finding 29. Residents of the district, I think, have benefited from the board's fiscal decisions. Honestly, the past three years, as you can see, the full-value tax rate has been dropping from 1901 and 1450, 1807 and 1670. I think everybody likes to see the tax rate go down, and maybe your individual taxes even helped, but the tax rate went down, which is a positive sign in many respects. And at the same time, the district has been able to, as you know, keep the district solvent by putting money away in reserves for future purposes. So, all good indicators in terms of the finances. If you, we just trended the data, and we said if the assessments in the district continue to go as they go, state aid remains the same percentage of the district's income as it has in the past years, and if the district's tax levy remains at the same rate, what's likely to happen? As you can see, the tax rate is projected to continue to decline, about 1.32% a year. Honestly, you know, the primary variable, as you can see in finding 31, that's been causing that, the primary variable, has been what's been happening with the assessed aids in the district. The property values have been going up, as you can see, at about 3% a year, 3.6% a year over the past five years. That's a nice thing to have happen, quite frankly. And that's allowed the district, along with good prudent fiscal management, to keep the tax rate down for people. We shared with the committee, in case we did get into talking about reorganizing any of the grades, some of what we know based on the educational research on grade organization. And as you can see, there's many different ways you can organize the grades. We've already mentioned the way you're organized as pre-K through 4, 5 through 8, 9 through 12. Literally, if you go around the state of New York, you'll find any grade arrangement you want to find. I mean, I've worked with K2s, 35s, 68s, 912s. Recent district, we just studied, had 8 through 12 in the high school, and they love it that way. The bottom line is that we tried to share with the committee, it isn't so much what grade configuration the district has, it's what you do with the grade configuration that you adopt, and how you manage that. The swing grades really are, where does the fifth grade belong? Does it belong with the elementary kids, the pre-K through 4, or does it belong in the middle school? Again, it doesn't make any difference where you place that grade, it's what you do with it, where it is placed. The other swing grade is ninth grade. There are lots of questions about where's the best placement for ninth grade. Some districts even have ninth grade annexes where they have the ninth grade off by itself. So, you can find literally any grade configuration. And so, as we talked about this with the committee, we said, really, we need to focus on now, what is the grade configuration as an outcome of this, but how would the district accommodate it given whatever grade configuration it maintains? But as you'll see, as we move along here, because of the commitment to the pre-K being in the elementary, to the 5-8 middle school configuration, the options that we looked at really didn't consider anything other than keeping the same grade configuration that you have, presumably. And as you can see in finding 33, in our discussions, we found that there is a lot of commitment to that middle school philosophy. Probably about the third or fourth meeting, we got into talking with the committee about various options to look at, and we tended to categorize them into two groups, either feasible options, and then ultimately desirable options. Feasible options are those options you could do it if you wanted to do it. Desirable options are the ones not only that you could do, but what options have some benefits educationally and fiscally for the district? And those then become the desirable options. When we got all done, at the end of the study, we ended up with 11 feasible options that we tried to project out what that might look like under each one of those conditions. And Alan will get into those, the desirable options, in just a minute. We had six desirable options, and as you can see, these are the numbers. We tended, number 1-1 is a variant of option 1, and 5-1 is a variant of option 5. Again, Alan will go through those, exactly what those were in a few minutes. Well, we found that there were really six options that were feasible and desirable. We began to cost out these options, so figuring, finding 36, rather, speaks to the overall cost of the district from the most costly option to the least most costly option. And as you can see, the most costly option, and again, you can find these on page 93 if you have a copy of the report in front of you. The most costly option was option 2 at 55 million, 5-1 at 37 million, option 1 at 36, option 5 at 32, option 1-1 at 27, and then the least costly option was option 6 at 16. Those of you who haven't seen the report will go through exactly what those were in just a minute. So, just kind of a ranking from most expensive to least expensive of the options that we'll talk through in just a minute. And then, once we knew the cost of the options, we tried to project out what might be the impact for a local taxpayer in terms of their actual tax bill they would get in the fall for their school taxes. And again, we have listed the options in the first year when the district would have to start paying back the principal and interest that it borrowed for the various options. You can see it from the most expensive to the least expensive option. Now, I should also tell you, there's a lot more detail behind this, and so the order isn't exactly the same because the length of the borrowing repayment periods are different. Okay? So, just so you know that. But you can see that in the first year of repayment, option 1 would be the most expensive. To a local taxpayer who owned a home valued at $100,000, they would have to, they'd see their taxes go up to $182 for a home of $100,000. Obviously, your home is assessed at 50,000, be half, is $200,000, it'd be more, it'd be double, rather. And that's how you relate this to your own particular situation. So, again, there's a lot of data, I hope the board knows and saw in the report, that obviously, we're not going to go over every piece of it. But those are the key findings that we thought bore on the question that we had before us, again, the study purpose here. So, Alan's going to go into our conclusions, talk through the recommendations of the options, and so forth. So, you know?
Put that for me? Good evening. Let me also thank you for having us here this evening, and echo Bill's thoughts about what a pleasure it was to work in your school district and to work with your community. You're indeed fortunate to have such dedicated people who care so much about your school and give so much time to help us out. It's a real plus, and we appreciate the opportunity. So, as Bill mentioned, I'm going to go through the conclusions and the recommendations, and try to walk a fine line between giving you the essence of what we think is important without boring you to death and confusing you with tons of detail that goes into this part of the report, so I'll try to do the best I can. Let me just begin by saying that our general conclusion in terms of organizing the grades is, our conclusion is that you should keep the current grade configuration that you have. The grade configuration of pre-K through 4, 5 through 8, and 9 through 12 really seems to work here. We saw no reason to change it. And here's what's behind it. We think it's educationally sound. As Bill mentioned, what happens in a school is far more important than what grades are in a school, and so we think that this being a very, very common grade configuration, we think it provides sound educational foundation for the students here, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. The whole structure is really generally well-accepted by faculty, administration, staff, and parents, and that's really important. This community appears to us to be very committed to the middle school philosophy, and so the organization and the programs that go with the formation of a middle school seems to be very well-supported and certainly a very common way to approach grade structures in schools. Bill also mentioned that there's no research that would point to a more appropriate grade level. If something were to be out there that says, you know, there's really a big difference in terms of how students achieve, if you organize grades in a different way, we'd certainly give that some thought. It doesn't seem to be the case here. So, we think your grade configuration is fine, we see no reason to change it, and by and large, it fits well with your facilities, which we'll also talk about in a minute, because the buildings that you have are really sound structures, but there's no question, and we'll talk about this, they do need some updating. So, this conclusion of keeping the grade structures as they are, a little bit more about why. Talk about maintaining grade configuration, which includes some specifics that we talked about with the committee. Again, it's very popular and has some educational advantages for students, including. We think these things are really important. Housing the pre-K program in the same building where the students will enter kindergarten, we think is very important. There was some discussion of options of moving the pre-K program out of the elementary school. We don't think that's a good idea. On the contrary, we think it's a very good idea to keep the pre-K program with the elementary school. It allows much easier coordination of the pre-K and kindergarten curriculum that should be tied together for the students, and also reduces the number of transitions for pre-K students that would go into kindergarten in first grade and second grade in the same building that they were in for pre-K. We think that's a plus. And also, we think it's really important that this arrangement allows for the easy interaction of pre-K and elementary teachers, which we think can generate great benefits for the faculty and for the students as well. So, this notion of keeping the configuration as it currently is is very important, we think, in terms of the elementary school, especially the location of the pre-K program. The other two are probably much less dramatic, but again, I mentioned earlier, the orientation of the middle school concept, the middle school and middle school programming that this community and this school district have embraced, and we think it's a very sound one, we think it's a very positive one. Can't imagine any reason why you would change it, frankly. And finally, the high school, a four-grade high school, as Bill mentioned, we've been in some studies where high schools have been other than 9 through 12, and there are some issues when you have high schools that are other than 9 through 12. In terms of getting kids high school credits, if the ninth grade is in a separate building, it just raises a number of issues with respect to staffing and transportation. So, the idea that you have 9 through 12 in one building, why would you change it? We think it's a good situation. So, that's a little more detail about why we believe that your pre-K 5-8 9-12 structure is a good one. So, now, further recommendations. As Bill mentioned, we started out with 11 different options and kind of settled on six. I will tell you that a couple of those options were generated by Bill and by me, and a number of the options were generated by members of the committee. All of the options were discussed with the committee, and the committee was given the opportunity to list pros and cons for each of the options. So, the generation of options and the discussion of options took up a significant amount of our committee work in the meetings that we had. And what I will tell you is whether you're talking about the 11 options that we started with, or the six options that we finished with, there is no perfect option that you can just say, bingo, that's it, we found it, let's do it. There are pluses and minuses to all of the options that we discussed. So, we're not, certainly not here to sell anything as the answer for TruMansburg. We're here to talk about why we think some options are better than others, but we understand that there are some complexities with this discussion about where we should go. So, our recommendation is generally that the district should adopt option 1, which essentially means, I'll do a little more detail in a minute, that we recommend you continue to use your current school buildings, and that you invest in making improvements that are recommended by the building condition survey. Bill has mentioned this a couple of times, but state law requires that every five years, school districts go through a process where architects and engineers come in and assess the building, and every five years, present you with a list of things that, while not emergencies in most cases, things that you ought to be thinking about in terms of maintaining and improving your facilities over the next five to 10 years. Those surveys happen every five years, and they happen on the fifth year, so they, 2005, '10, they just finished 2015, the next one will be 2020. The one that was done in 2015 for TruMansburg that Bill talked about a minute ago, if you added up those numbers for the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, there's about $60 million worth of stuff that the architects are saying you really should be thinking about in TruMansburg. Let me be clear, that it doesn't mean you've got to do $60 million worth of work in the next two years. It doesn't mean that at all. These are not all urgent items, they're certainly not emergency items. They are items that you should be talking about and making decisions about in terms of how big a priority they are for TruMansburg. And in our opinion, you should take that $60 million worth of stuff, determine some priorities, and develop a facilities plan. And all of those individual things should be addressed. So, we're not saying that there's any urgency because it's $60 million. You've got to have a process where you engage your community, and your school community, in saying, what are the specifics, what are the priorities? We would, however, say that this is not 8 or 10 million, it's 60, and that's something certainly that should catch your attention. And again, you're going to have to decide how much of that should be done in the next five years, but it's a pretty good-sized number for a school district to start with. It's kind of that thing, you know, it's kind of like your own house. You know, this year, you seal the driveway, and next year, you put in a sidewalk to your front door, and next year, you decide to paint your bedrooms. But there comes a point where you've got to put in a new roof and replace all the windows, and you do that every 20 or 25 years, but you've got to do it. And we think that that $60 million number is saying that time is getting close for TruMansburg. Not next year, not necessarily the year after, but a plan needs to be developed because that's a pretty good-sized number. So, in addition to that, we looked at six options for reconfiguring the grades. Again, we talked with the advisory committee at length about these six options, and had a lot of conversation. Let me try to explain to you what these six options were. And I'll do a couple of tables of detail. Again, we have, Katie provided us with architect drawings, drawing after drawing after drawing. This is very complex stuff, but I've tried to do on one page is to say, here are the highlights of what these six options are. So, what we called option 1 was to keep the grade alignment as it is and make capital improvements to each building. I'll do more detail in a second. That option 1 cost is about $36 million, and when you finish, you'd have about 284,000 square feet of school space. That's option 1. Keep the grade alignment as it is, three buildings, and then improve each of your three buildings, $36, $90. Option 1.1 is similar to option 1, and I'll give you, again, detail in a minute, but reduce square footage options, especially at the middle school. So, there's less additions with option 1.1, that's why the cost is less. You can see, this was 36, this is 26, but you had fewer classrooms under option 1.1, so you end up with smaller square footage. Advantages to both, questions about both as well. Option 2, keep the grade alignment the way it is, make some changes to the high school and middle school, but, I'm sorry, the high school and the elementary school. But option 2 says, close the middle school and build a brand-new middle school on the same campus, separate building. same campus, separate building, that's option two. Assuming the middle school is about the same square footage as the current middle school, and that really needs a lot of design work to make that happen. But you can see, that would be the same square footage as option one. But because we're building a brand-new middle school, this is about $55 million to do that. Okay? Option five and 5.1 are kind of related. Option five says, again, keep the grade alignment, close the middle school, and build a new middle school between the elementary school and the high school. So not a separate building, that's how it's different from option two, but we kind of connect the elementary school and the high school by building a new middle school in between the two buildings. That would cost about $31 million, and would be 233,000 square feet, which you can see is less than the other options. The reason this is less is that this plan of building the middle school between the elementary and the high school would call for a lot of sharing of common spaces. So you wouldn't have to build a separate cafeteria for the middle school, they would share, you wouldn't have to build a separate auditorium, they would share. And I'll get into those details in a second. But that's why this can work, but still have lesser square footage, sharing of space. 5.1, same idea as number five, but putting out a little more room to make additions, so the cost goes from $31 million to $36, but you also get more space. It goes from 233,000 square feet to 246. So the final option is option six, which is to go through that $60 million building condition survey. Take only the most critical top priority items, fix them, put a STEM classroom in each building, and that's it. It is the least costly option, as you can see, that's $60 million. It's, the square footage is roughly, you know, where we are right now. Essentially, it would be taking just the most important things, only the top priority items. So you would kick a number of items down the road with this option, no question about that, but it's also the cheapest option, pluses and minuses. So that's generally the description of the six options. For those of you who really want to get into the detail of this stuff, there were two days when I apparently had very little to do. And I went through the plans and then checked them with Katie, and I said, how do we describe your drawings in some way that makes some sense, somebody that wants the details? So I went through and I created these tables. And this table talks about the elementary school. Anything you see over here that's got an A is an addition to the elementary school, and anything that's got an R is a renovation. Okay? And again, if you want to take the time, you'll be happy to know that I'm not going to do this tonight, but if you want to take the time, you can go through five of the six different options. The only one that's not here is option two, which is build a new middle school. But the other five options are all here, and you can find out in the addition of STEM room, 3200 square feet, it's going to be an option one, it's going to be an option 1.1, it's not going to be a these. But you can follow every single detail to try to get a sense of what's behind this. So just know that this is in the study, that's what it means. It was done to try to convey for people who need detail to understand this. This is the detail behind drawings, and we think it's a little bit easier to comprehend than looking at a half a dozen sets of drawings by the architect. So that's the reason that's there. So here's the elementary school. Here's the middle school. And here's the high school. And if you want the detail, it's in there for you. If you don't, let me give it one more shot at trying to expand and explain in a little more detail the six options. Okay, so these are the six options we just talked about. Trying to go a little bit farther to make some sense of this. Let me start with, the color highlighting has meaning. The yellow highlighting talks about closing the middle school. So you see just by where the yellow is which options you have to close the middle school to me. The blue highlighting basically tells you what's going to be added in each option. And the green highlighting shows you what's going to be shared in each option. Okay? So the color is important, and if you just want to, you know, eyeball it, hopefully that color will be helpful. So let's go a little more detailed with the options. Again, option one, grade alignment stays the same, capital improvements each building, meaning in addition to making some changes from the building condition survey, there would be eight new classrooms added to the middle school, and a renovation of 20 other classrooms in the middle school. Basically, you would have what would look like a brand-new middle school. It'd be pretty much completely renovated, you'd have eight new classrooms in addition to the other changes, and that's what takes you up to 284,000 square feet. That's what costs about $36 million. Again, option one is similar to this, but it doesn't add the eight new classrooms in the middle school, and it doesn't renovate the 20 classrooms. Well, what that means is, you can see, it's $10 million less expensive, but it's also 11,000 square feet smaller. You don't have the eight new classrooms, you don't have the renovation of the current buildings, and that's the difference between one and two. Or one and 1.1, I'm sorry. Option two, now you'll see this yellow highlighting start to show up, and what jumps out is that options two, five, and 5.1, these three options, all include closing the current middle school. This is a very fundamental, very basic question to this study. Should the middle school be closed? That was at the heart of many of our discussions and many of the thoughts that Bill and I had. It was a really important question because the building is 90 years old. And one of the questions that certainly is going to come up is, how much money are we going to invest in a facility that's 90 years old? No question about that. On the other hand, what we found is that it was, from all accounts, everybody that we've talked to, that structurally, very sound. You have invested money recently to put in all the windows in that school, a new roof on that school, and we believe that, you know, structurally, it's ready to take the renovations or the additions you may add to it. We, closing a school building is a really complicated undertaking. There are tons of issues that come up with closing a school. We're not adverse to recommending that. As a matter of fact, in the study that Bill and I finished up about a year ago, we recommended closing two elementary schools in a school district. So we do it, but we only do it where we think it's necessary. We don't think it's necessary here to close the middle school. When you close a building in any community, there's a huge emotional attachment to a building that a community has, and you will have significant community conversation about your thinking about closing that building. It has, I would guess, a very special place in the heart of this community, if this community is like any other community we've ever been in. Number two, if you close the building, the question then comes, what do you do with it? Do you demolish the building? And again, the emotional attachment becomes very important with that option. Do you leave it empty, which over time, even though you'll continue to heat it at some level, the building will begin to deteriorate if it's not used? Number three, do you rent it, do you sell it? Do you sell it to someone? Well, who is interested in buying that building? And if you find somebody who's interested in buying the building, is it somebody who is going to be a positive addition to that school campus where you've got all three of your buildings on the same grounds? Can you lease it out? Again, who's going to lease it? And if they lease, if somebody leases it, is it going to be a positive addition to that campus? Or are you always going to be looking over your shoulder to see what's happening there? What impact is it going to have if you sell it or lease it to people who may be wandering around your school buildings, campuses? How about traffic going in and out of that building? How about parking in terms of access to that building? Trust us, there are many complicating factors that go with closing a school, which we're not adverse to doing, but we only would recommend doing it if it's really necessary. We don't think it's necessary here. So notice, close the middle school for option two, and remember, option two, build a brand-new middle school on the same campus, $58.5 million. Option five, close the middle school. This adds 14 new classrooms to this new middle school that's going to be built between the existing elementary school and the high school. So you're going to have 14 middle school classrooms on the grounds between your current high school and elementary school. It is going to involve sharing spaces for these functions between the middle school and the elementary and high school. $31 million. Option 5.1, close the middle school. This adds about 14, actually 13 classrooms and an office. Again, we're back to shared spaces. But again, we've got a cost of around $36 million. The sixth option is, we didn't change this slide, is a top priorities only, scratch the words bare bones, we missed that, sorry, to the facilities with new STEM classrooms. So that's the, that's the kick it down the road and do only the things that are the most high priority, plus the STEM classrooms, that's $16 million. So again, if the, we hope, the color piece is helpful to let you compare these six options. And the things that jump out are the blues that show you where you need new space, the yellows that show you which options involve closing the middle school, and then the greens that point out the shared spaces, which we hope, at a 30,000-foot view, gives you a pretty good comparison of those six options without spending days to go through them. So finally, you know, our final recommendation in terms of the board looking at option one is that in addition to looking at option one, the board should adopt a reasonable timeline for implementing these recommendations. There was some conversation going on over the course of our meetings with the advisory committee that talked about getting a referendum ready for March, March of 2017. When we heard that, and we usually put a recommendation on the timeline anyways, we believe that's just too fast. We believe that you have made a very wise decision to undertake a study that includes school personnel as well as the community. There's been wonderful dialogue between the community people and the school people, and we believe that time has led to a better understanding about what problems are posed by this kind of a study. We think that now to move quickly to a referendum would send a message to the community that the dialogue is over and we're ready to go vote, and we think that would be a mistake. So we are recommending that you look at, you look at these steps, which I'm not going to go through, but that the referendum, given that you've got to go through some priority settings, some communications, some dialogue with a bunch of different groups, further planning with your architect about really what it is you want, that a referendum vote probably is a year away. It could be 10 or 11 months, it could be 14 months, but it's not two or three. Because we believe that this conversation in this community needs time, that time provides the opportunity for dialogue. Dialogue leads to understanding, and understanding, in many cases, we believe leads to support. This is a big undertaking for the school district. We get that. And we believe that the best way to have people understand the need for whatever it is you as a board decide to do and to support it, is to reach out to the community and say, here's what we're thinking, tell us what you think. Give us your questions, what's wrong, what's right, what are you thinking? And that process takes some time. So, can we go back one?
Yep.
So again, we're recommending that this conversation went for a year. As I mentioned, we have looked at recommending option one. We understand that this is a lot of money. There is no getting around that. Wouldn't begin to try to in any way downplay the importance of this. These are all a lot of money. And so the question is, is the time now, or is the time three to five years from now, where we undertake either the minimal amount of work that we can undertake to keep our school district afloat and provide the STEM classrooms we want and spend $16 million? Or is it time to improve all three buildings and really make that middle school a 21st century learning environment and bite off a $36 million project? We get, that's an important distinction. We get that it's important discussion. We get that it's a lot of money. And we also get, by the way, that, you know, we get the car to go back to Syracuse, so we do it, we understand, we're sensitive to it. But we think we're getting very close to that point where undertaking a significant project is in the works for TruMansburg, and when you do that, you will turn around the facilities in this district, and you'll be well-prepared for the next 30 years in terms of providing the environment to provide the kind of program that you want. So before I ask for questions, let me just wrap up. Couple of things, you remember this, there is no perfect solution. One through six, there are pluses and minuses to each of those six options, no question about that. We would also implore you to remember that reasonable people can disagree on which is the best option for the district to pursue. The important thing, we think, is to open up community dialogue, to have discussions about the issues, to have discussions about your buildings, to have discussions about what you want for your kids in TruMansburg. But to keep the discussions focused on the issues and realize this is not personal. We may not agree because you see it differently than I see it, because there are, again, there are pluses and minuses to each of the options. But as you have these conversations in the future, understand that reasonable people can differ about six different opportunities, all of which are different, one from the other. And I would just close by saying, as you go through this, if, you know, Bill and I can send you some stuff, or if we can help you put this conversation together, let us know. But I think that's it, and again, we've just enjoyed our time here.
I want to add one final thought, just so there's a little clearance. The recommendations that Alan has shared with the board this evening, we wanted to be real clear, those are our recommendations. As a matter of fact, in our last meeting, we went around with the committee, and we asked everyone individually if they would speak to us about their thoughts and where we're ending up recommending, because these are ours, not necessarily the committee's recommendations. And I will tell you that as we went around the room, there were various opinions about what was the best direction for the board to consider moving. So there certainly was not unanimous agreement among the committee itself. As a matter of fact, there was a difference of opinion sitting around. sitting around the tables in the room. So just to be clear, these were, these are our recommendations for board consideration.
Neither was there unanimous disagreement. Neither was there a unanimous agreement on any of the other options. So it was just, I mean, some people, we go back a couple. I mean, some people are saying, you know, option one, it's time, let's take it on. Other people are saying, no way, this community is ever going to support it. It's too much money. Let's look at an option that's less expensive. Can we break it up into two projects? Because we may need this, but it's just too much money. All of those things are valid points, and all of those things came up in that conversation.
So with that, I guess we'll open the floor to questions from the board.
Yeah, yeah, I'll go. I'll start. So, you know, you've showed us these costs. I guess one of my biggest questions is, how realistic are those costs?
Well, first of all, we worked with Hunt Architects to provide us with some cost estimates. So maybe Katie's probably a better person to answer that. But we're assuming, I mean, they're a very reputable firm, and you're working with a very reputable architectural firm. So our assumptions are those costs are very realistic. Now, having said that, you know, as time goes on, and as Alan says, more specific plans have to be developed. You know, these are estimates based on some basic beliefs about what would go into these various options. And the further you go down the road before making decisions, construction costs change, you know. So I would just say, and I hope Katie would reiterate, that these are the best estimates that your architects can give you at this point in time.
It is absolutely commonplace for school districts to say to architects, what's this going to cost? And they have models for estimating those costs. They do it all the time. They're not going to be to the dollar. But it's what they do. And we got all, we didn't estimate any of this. Katie and her group did, gave us the estimates. And it's what they do. And so I would say they're pretty good numbers. Could they be off by a million? Absolutely. Could it be thirty-four instead of thirty-five, thirty-six? Yes. It's not going to be twenty.
And the important thing to remember is we also worked with the district's financial advisors, Bernard Donigan, Bernie Donigan's place, other Victor, to give us estimates on amortization schedules of paying interest back. You know, there's a lot of assumptions that these projections are based upon, and we can debate the assumptions, whether the correct assumptions are not. But obviously, we're looking out into the future and we have to base the numbers on something. So they're based on, I think, pretty reasonable assumptions in most cases, including the architects' costs as well as the financial advisors' estimates of borrowing.
You mentioned earlier that the building survey indicated there was about twenty-sixty million dollars that needed to be taken, that we need to invest. So how much saved if we chose option A? How much of that thirty-five million addresses that sixty thousand?
About sixty million?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to think. Twistful thinking. Sixty, I have a hard time pronouncing that.
I want to just clarify a couple of things. Sixty million is stuff to be addressed. I would not say, ever, that it's sixty million dollars' worth of stuff that's got to be done in three or five years. It is stuff that's identified. Some of it is more short-term, some of it is more long-term. Please don't walk away saying we got sixty million, where are we going to get sixty million bucks in the next two years?
I understand that. But I'm wondering that, you know, some of this is going to address those needs, which will bring the number down.
Right, so a part of that, yes, a part of that, and I don't have that sheet with me, a part of that addresses the important and the lesser priority items in the building addition survey. It also adds the classrooms to the middle school, adds the renovations to the middle school, and does the STEM classrooms in each of the buildings. So some, a good chunk, I don't remember the number, and I don't hit that with me. Katie can get that to us. Yeah. Right, if you go with the thirty-five million, how much of the sixty is going to be taken care of? A good chunk of it, more than just the top priority. It's a good chunk.
Jane, option six are the districts' identified priority ones. So those are, those are priority ones that we really, really have to do in the next few years. Like, a lot of those things. So if you look at option, say, five, to identify how much of the sixty million goes into option five, that's hard to say, because thirty million is the middle school, which by all accounts gets eliminated from the conversation of option five. So, you know, half of that-
That's the middle school that has the most to do, according to the building survey.
Yeah, yeah. And Sarah, to answer your question, they're conceptual estimates. So we asked Katie to put together a design, a conceptual design, that what does it look like? What could it look like if we did option one? What do the additions look like? And then she put together a square foot cost to generate the estimate. If you were to say, the board says, okay, we're going to go with option one, it doesn't have to be thirty-five million either. We can start to work on those scope items to reduce some of that cost. Because if we look at thirty-five, thirty-six million dollars, and they even alluded to, geez, we don't know that we can get that support from our voters because of the tax impacts, we can start to chip away at those numbers too. So it's hard to look at this and make a decision, because the next step that they recommend is to put together a facilities committee that really starts to drill down on what is the project scope going to be. So those numbers are, like they said, they're right, you know, a shot in time. This is what it could look like. This is what we think it might cost. This is what we think the tax impact might be.
Specifically, finding twenty-three in the presentation tonight gives you the detail of eleven million from the building addition survey. Eleven million for the elementary school, twenty-nine million for the high school, and nineteen million for the high school. Eleven for the elementary, twenty-nine for the middle school, and nineteen for the high school. If you add those three up, that's where the sixty million comes from. So yes, the middle school is, clearly, the middle school is most in need of work of your three buildings. You didn't even study to figure that out. But you got the detail and the specifics now. But yes, that's where the money is going for, you know, private buildings.
That's better than having the newer buildings.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any questions from those of you not sitting behind the table? Yes, ma'am.
What's the very long-term life of the middle school? Like, what's the lifespan, what's left of it? You say it's in good structural sound, but what does it mean?
I don't, we do not have the-
How much you want to pay?
That's right. Estimated-
Obviously, yes.
I know it's a community study. So I can't, I can't give you a number of years.
Well, then I guess I have to board.
The SED says that a building lasts a hundred years. Now, we all know that there are buildings in the state that are already a hundred years old that are in fine condition, including our middle school. It's nearing a hundred years, even another decade or so. So it could last, I mean, there's buildings all over the world. They're hundreds of years, thousands of years old. So if we continue to maintain it, it could last a long, long time.
And they've eliminated most of the asbestos out of buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, there's very little asbestos left.
The answer is it all depends on what you, as a school district, continue to do to the facility over years. But as Alan mentioned, just like your home, if you're not doing something pretty regularly, eventually you may want to move.
The roof just got done, the windows just got done.
It's a very structurally sound building. It's just a lot of the mechanics are outdated, a lot of the finishes. And then there's some spatial issues within the building just from when it was first designed into how it's teaching now. But, yeah, like they're saying, it's a very structurally sound building. So it could last as long as you continue to upgrade all those other things. So there's no real way to say how long it'll last.
Do the project costs at this point include any energy-friendly changes, like the heating system? I'm sure the lighting system with the LEDs is included.
Yeah, anything that we do new will be meet the energy code. We're already starting to do some things like LED upgrades. You know, we have the solar panels that are on the roof now.
In the middle school. Yeah. I mean, the middle school is the most energy-efficient development of all buildings at the moment. I think the major, my vision of the major problem with it is that those, the two science rooms are just very, very difficult to work with because they're, you know, about four feet wide and sixty feet long, and they're two six in each. That's just not up to current, you know, what you would find in your middle school science facility. They do need to be leveled.
How much from the last capital project was put into the middle school?
The windows?
Three million. Three million, what? Three million.
Yeah, lots of problems. Roof, stairs, and windows.
And then of course the handicapped. Oh, right, the handicapped. Oh, the handicapped, except for the-
Except for the one that is-
And I think at this point, one of the larger investments needed is the heating, the air- Yeah, we've got to replace the boiler. The boiler, yeah.
Yeah, that's a major.
We have to do it. You want to have a choice. That has to be theirs.
Is Steve the hot water converter?
No, it's a hot water boiler now. It's just all the components of the entire system are just old. We're running on a control system that we can't get serviceable anymore, or parts. So thankfully, our guys have saved parts in previous conversions. So we're kind of like scrapyard, putting things together now.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one, I have one down there.
I just wanted to add to what you said about community engagement and being involved, because I think if the community hears about it more and is aware of, like, all of this, they'll be more on board to support it. And I'm surprised there aren't more people here. And I actually didn't even know about it until Jill told me. So I don't know if that's me not being engaged enough. But I'm not sure why there are more people here in the community.
I think initially, our, definitely our idea was to engage the community, because this is something that, this is not a decision we just, a small group can make. But at the same time, we thought it was important for them to be able to conduct a survey, so at least we have something specific and definitive to talk about. Because if you start with, gee, what do we do?
No, I mean tonight.
Well, this is the beginning. Now, this is the beginning. Now, we have this, it's going to be out in the public and we're just going to be actively soliciting and saying to people, this is something you need to think about it, because as Bill pointed out, it's not a decision we can make quickly.
No, I just, I just think if more people were here tonight to hear the whole presentation, they'd- Then we're on board and we're forward.
Well, it's also going to be available on the website, is it not, Michael?
It's been advertised, but probably just not where people have caught it.
And on the website, it says it's still at the school. And it was tweeted here, but it was listed as.
I think it's been deleted to me.
And I will say that every committee meeting was open to the public, and we did have some, not a lot, but we did have some people show up. And following the committee meeting, we always opened the floor to any of the public that was there to ask questions. I think there's been a real honest effort to try to make sure that this is being done in the open and nothing's being done behind closed doors. But, you know, you can't make people come to things. That's true in every school district. You know, you've just got to try to, you know, make them aware of it and hope that they avail themselves of the opportunity.
It is work in progress.
It is.
Yeah, just to be clear, the conversations that Bill and I heard were about doing a referendum in March were more informal after-meeting conversations. They were not the position of the board at any time. So it's not, it was just people were talking, how fast can we do this? And so we went this way, but you should know, it was never the board.
So this may be more for a facilities point of view, but there was some mention about asbestos here. And I know in these old buildings, even some of the ones that are not that old, you'll have PCBs, you'll have lead, all of that. And the abatement of that can cause some really big cost overruns. And so I'm not sure how well the different buildings have been surveyed for that type of thing, if they've been looked at, if there's any history, if that's been accounted for in some of the projections.
Yeah, I have a whole, a whole bookshelf dedicated to asbestos in my office. So in 1988, they started with the AHRRA process where everything had to be surveyed and identified. And each time we do a project, all of that documentation is saved and recorded. Greg is right, our buildings are pretty good. There's really, a lot of the abatement has been done. PCBs are definitely there around windows. Some of the older windows, the middle school's pretty good now. It's got brand-new windows. But that's all included as part of a capital project. When we touch a space, you know, Hunt will come in and do a survey or, you know, we'll have somebody private come in, do surveys and document and do testing and blood testing. So we're, you know, we're right on top of that.
But that's good. Because I've said, I've seen some-
Yeah, absolutely. I've run into some serious issues.
The major middle school abatement was done for asbestos when I was in middle school in 1988. So that was done when they built that new gymnasium on the end of the building. And that was a major undertaking. It was a two-year project, if I recall right, while I was in middle school. Started at the end of my sixth grade year and moved through that.
Just a kid.
Just a kid. I remember the construction.
I think after that, they lost the theater in the middle school as well.
You're right, yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions from anyone or any comments? As we said before, this is something that we really would like to be a consensual.
On behalf of Alan and myself, again, we really appreciate the board the opportunity to work with the district. We really enjoy getting out and knowing different school districts and like to help deal with challenges that boards are faced with. So thank you for the opportunity to work with them.
Thank you very much.
And that weekend in the closet was well worth it. Alone together. No, no. Okay. Do we have any more questions that we need to address? Okay, any adjustments which anyone would like to make to the consent agenda? If there are none, I entertain a motion. And a second? No, any discussion regarding that? Okay, Oliver David?
Hi.
Any votes? Which brings us very quickly to item nine, which is new business. And that is applicable for the CPSE recommendations, which are handed out just tonight. And a second?
Second.
Any questions or any speciality on them? Any, there's really nothing special with-
Straightforward, just straightforward. If you want to give them to split-ways.
Okay, Oliver David?
Hi.
Any votes to attention this motion carry? Board forum. Anybody have any comments or questions that they would like to- So they're going to be on it.
I'll take just one moment to thank Bill and Alan. I was able to attend all of the meetings over the course of the last seven months. They've done an outstanding job. And also to thank all of the committee members for their participation. I hope that the community members that participated or were part of the committee can find time to join us in future board meetings to ask some very specific questions that were raised during those seven months that I think would be good if the entire community both heard the questions and the answers to them in terms of space, you know, curriculum, instruction, et cetera, et cetera. So concerns or fears about moving to, you know, a combined building, if that's an option that the board looks at seriously, those types of things. So I hope that we haven't worn out our welcome and your patience in terms of participating in that.
It's an information that committee was comprised not only of committee members, but a number of administrators and industry. We're trying to get all the stakeholders together so that they can have an opportunity to look at these-
know, really off-the-wall ideas about how to, you can think of things. And over time, and, yeah, I became a little alarmed a couple of times, I think, but over time, everyone really did truly come to consensus, which it was, is amazing to watch that process. Because after a while, we were really, we were out there. It was, it was a great process, and I can't thank you enough for the work you, Katie and her firm have done as well.
Good people, I love them. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Did we make a student perspective, or was it just adults?
Not, not for this committee, but we're just, we're such a part of that, although that certainly is in the future.
And we're thinking about that moving forward.
I think that'd be a great, a great move, just to get that perception and ideas and fears and, and, you know, creative ideas, you know, in the box.
Taylor must go from sixth grade to seventh grade with twenty instructions, right? Okay. Yeah. Motion with her?
So who?
Okay, second. Thank you, and thank you all for coming.